All right, I'd like to call the order to the Mylan area schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. Would everyone please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone attending this evening, as well as those who will be watching the recording. All board members are present, except Ms. Haika is excused and Ms. Gutierrez is excused, and our student board members are excused as well. Our first order of business under Communications and Community Engagement, our public comments. A reminder that this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public meeting. There are two times for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. When addressing the Board, you will be asked to state your name. The Board determines the amount of time granted to individuals or groups to speak. Each person shall be allowed to speak for up to three minutes. Board members make questions speakers but are not obligated to answer questions or make statements or commitments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such items will refer to the Superintendent for Advisory, Investigation, Study, and/or Recommendation are designated as future agenda items for Board consideration. Are there any students who'd like to address the Board? Are there any public members who'd like to address the Board?
My name's Ron Stark. I'm a resident taxpayer, small business owner here in Mylan. I'm here to respectfully request a meeting removal of the graphic novel Stars in Their Eyes by Jessica Walton and ask that Mylan Middle School Library, under Board Policy 2521 and in alignment with Executive Order 14190 and the Michigan Department of Best Practices for School Library Collections. Number one, age inappropriate sexual content. This book contains explicit romantic and physical interactions between two 14-year-old girls, a scene where one character kisses another while straddling her lap, dialogue about making out and butterflies in my stomach in context to stimulating sexual awakening. This title is rated for 13 and plus and flagged for sexual content and kissing. Board Policy 2521 requires material to be appropriate to the age, maturity level, and the interest of the student served. This title is accessible to sixth through eighth graders, 11 through 14 years old. At Mylan Middle School, including students below the publisher's own 13-plus recommendations. Violation of parental rights and federal funding conditions. Executive Order 14190, Department of Education to withhold funds from districts who promote gender ideology in K through 12. While this book does not address transgenderism, the DOE February 2025 guidelines explicitly includes normalization of same-sex romantic relationships in elementary and middle school libraries as a trigger for review, page 14 footnote 22 of the Executive Order. Mylan area schools receive grants and subsidies include titles that support low-income students with allowing the FY25 distribution. Anyways, these are grounds for filing a trigger review for your funding. Action requested. Under Board Policy 1930 and Policy 2521, I formally request, one, immediate suspension of Stars in Their Eyes from circulation; two, format of Material Review Committee including parents and community members; a public report within 30 days on compliance with E014... 73 minutes? I'm almost done. This is not about censorship. It is about age appropriation transparency and protecting fundamental rights. I support reading programs, special education, and teacher salaries amid ongoing state budget concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. McMahon, will you follow up with him in regards to this? And will Mr. or Superintendent McMahon will be in contact with you in regards to this? Okay, perfect. That'll be great. Appreciate that. Yep. Thank you for the comment. Are there others? All right, that brings us to Routine Matters for Approval. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 29th, 2025.
Motion by Pryor.
Support by Burdette.
So Moon supported to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 29th, 2025. Any corrections? Hearing none. Ms. Murray.
Thank you. Burdette?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hi, excuse me. Murray, yes. Pryor?
Yes.
Sislo?
Yes.
And motion carries five zero.
Next up, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting closed session of October 29th, 2025.
Motion by Pryor.
Support by Murray.
So Moon supported to approve the minutes of the regular meeting closed session of October 29th, 2025. Again, these are the minutes that are in the envelopes. You can pass those in. It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes of the regular meeting closed session of October 29th, 2025. Ms. Murray.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Murray, yes. Pryor?
Yes.
Sislo?
Yes.
Burdette?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next up, for bills and reimbursements, I need a motion to approve the bills and reimbursement of expenses.
Move by Burdette.
Support by Pharaoh.
So Moon supported to approve the bills and reimbursement of expenses. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Burdette?
I would just like to say that I did get a chance to review both the check register and the P-card charges for the month, and I did not have any further questions for Ms. Hendricks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdette and Ms. Hendricks. Any others? All right, it's been moved and supported to approve the bills and reimbursement of expenses. Ms. Murray.
Thank you. Murray, yes. Pryor?
Yes.
Sislo?
Yes.
Burdette?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, that brings us on to the areas of our strategic plan and business. We do have a program update from Ms. Jen Sailor, the English Language Learner Services. Sorry about that. It is a mouthful, so. Ms. Sailor, thank you for being here this evening after a day, so. Sure.
Okay.
Yep, it's still on.
Still on? Okay, cool. So for those of you who don't know me, like you said, I'm Jen Sailor. My official title is English Language Learner Interventionist, which is most definitely a mouthful. But I have just some updates for you about the program. So here are the numbers of students that we have in the EL program. What qualifies a student for our EL program is the Home Language Survey that they fill out when they register. If the parents indicate that the English was not the student's first language or that there is another language that is spoken at home more than English, then that gets flagged to me, and then I go and I have a process where I use a screener to screen that child and see if they qualify for services or not. And I'll explain that with the handout that you have here in just a second. So EL Services, what do I do? You name it. Since I'm the only one in the district, here is just like a brief brainstorm of things that I do. The document that you do have in front of you is something that I hand out to every single teacher for every single child. So whether it is a junior in high school who has six teachers or it's a second grader and they have one teacher. So what you have in front of you is, in the spring, the students take a test that's called the WEDA Access Test, and that tests their skills in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing in English. So if you noticed, on the left-hand side, it says what the category is, whether it's listening, speaking, reading, or writing. Then those students are scored on a scale from one to six. Six means that they're on par with their classmates and they're good to go. One is typically for our newcomers or, you know, our students who come to us with very limited English. So what I do for every teacher is I give them this handout. It has the student's name on it, and it has their score for that particular category. If they scored a 1.9, then instead of just one, I put the 1.9 to show how close they are to being able to be bumped up to the two. And so this is something that teachers can immediately have in their hands at the beginning of the year to help support the students that they have in their classroom. I'm also in charge of Power School, and so I go in and I flag the kids in Power School and denote that there are EL learners. In addition to sending out emails to teachers and saying, hey, look for this document that's in your mailbox. Here's what you can do with it. And I think that's one of the most important things that I do at the beginning of the year to kind of get everybody up and running if they're not familiar with most of our students. Other things that I do, I provide in-class support. I accommodate materials. I source materials. As you can see, I have Deretone Si hombres. And then the other one is of mice and men in Russian, because we had a newcomer family here from Ukraine, and they speak both Ukrainian and Russian. And Russian resources are easier to source than Ukrainian ones. So I found textbooks. The picture that's on there, the hand-drawn picture, that was a student that we have who has very limited English skills, and that was part of my background with them for explaining Lord of the Flies and how the kids ended up on the island. So that I can speak to them in English, use the visual supports, and then help them understand what's happening. I coach. I have done staff PD. I provide translation services. I'm fluent in Spanish, so if it's a meeting in Spanish, I can translate that meeting for the family. But if it's a language that I don't speak, which we have a lot of them in the district, then I provide them access to a translator. They can reach out to me and say, you know, I need... For parent-teacher conferences, we had two different conferences that needed to be translated, one in Mandarin and one in Ukrainian. And so I said, okay, here's your information. This is how you can get that set up and have a translator available. I don't know if you've noticed, in emails that go out from principals for other building staff that uses Smore, there's a little translate button up at the top. I like to think that that's because of me, because it was a feature that I don't think everybody knew was widely available. And it was really important to be able to get that kind of information in the hands of our parents as well. I do all of the testing, whether it's something in class and I read a test for a kid that I've accommodated or the kid needs a quiet space to take their test. I also do the WEDA Access Test with all of our students in the district, and that's in the spring. So from kindergarten through 12th grade, I take care of all of that testing. And then those scores come in in July, and then that's what I use to create the document that you have in front of you. Family communication. I provide access to resources for families. I have a document, and by resources, I mean like legal aid, housing aid, whatever a family might need. I have a spreadsheet that has in basically every town in the county what is available to families as far as assistance in that way goes. I pre-teach. I reteach. I pull kids out and do individual support. Like I said, if you can think of it, I do it and probably have done it. One of the fun parts that I really enjoy our family activities, it's really important for our families to feel connected and for our families to know that they have support here as well. So in the past, I've been able to... Oh, that color didn't show up very well. So on the left, where you have the bathtub picture and then the Henry Ford, I took a group of families to the Henry Ford Museum, and we were able to use our Title III and Section 41 money to get them admission to the museum, to provide a bus, to give them money for lunch. We did it on a Saturday so that families would hopefully be available to be able to, you know, not have to take a day off work to be able to go do that. And that was a really fun activity that we did a couple of times. I got some really positive feedback about that. And then we also went to a Toledo Mud Hens game. The Mud Hens do a great educational program where they have certain days set aside throughout the year where they invite schools, and they have educational activities set up. And they have all different kinds of stations that the kids can go to, and there's swag, and there's, I mean, you name it, and the kids had a great time. Again, it was admission, the bus, lunch. We did that one during a school day because that was when they offered it for the kids to be able to go. But especially for some of our students who were our newcomers or, you know, weren't familiar with what it's like to go to a baseball game, like that was a super cool experience, and they had a lot of fun. And as you can see, they got to meet Muddy the Mud Hen and have their picture taken. One of the other parts that I really like about my job is I get to talk about Mylan, and I get to promote our town, and I get to promote our schools. I presented at MABE, which is the Michigan Association of Bilingual Educators. I presented at their conference and about our family engagement activities that we did. I'm part of LNET, which is a countywide network of EL teachers and leaders. I led a book study last year on Building Better Writers, and then I'll continue that again this year. And that has been a fabulous resource for me since this position didn't exist until a few years ago. And so I've kind of been putting the plane together in the air, and that has been a fabulous resource for me to gather that information that I need. And like that spreadsheet that I talked about that has the resources on it came from that group. And so that's been an amazing opportunity. One of the coolest ways that I have gotten to talk about our town is last year for European World Language Day. I got to work with Bilingualism Matters in ALTE, which is the Association of Language Teachers in Europe. And I was able to participate in this, in the European World Language Day. And so it was like literally broadcast around the globe, and I got to talk about our town and the things that we do here connected to the Seal of Biliteracy, which is what I have next. So the Seal of Biliteracy, if you're familiar, is... It was created by the State of Michigan to recognize high school graduates who exhibit proficiency in English in at least one additional world language via several approved pathways. If they move here after seventh grade and have a copy of their transcript from their home country and they meet our graduation requirements, they automatically qualify for the Seal of Biliteracy. If they come here before seventh grade, then I give them an assessment similar to the WEDA, but it's in their home language, so it's testing again that listening, speaking, reading, writing in their native language. And through my work with... So that was how I ended up here, is we had a student who Romanian is their first language and is their home language. Well, the State of Michigan doesn't have like an approved vendor, so there were some hoops to jump through, and in order to actually do that test, I had to contact ALTE, the Association of Language Teachers in Europe, and connect with a woman, lovely, lovely woman named Dina in Romania. And so then Dina and I had to coordinate how that test would work and what that would look like and when we could coordinate times to be able to make it happen for the student to be able to earn the Seal of Biliteracy, which they did. And I was so excited because it was quite the process, but it was so very cool. And like I said, opened the door for this opportunity to be able to speak literally on a global scale about who we are and what we do. And you can see there on the left, that's my slide. That was my opening slide from my presentation. And then I hyperlink the presentation that's on YouTube. So, you know, in your infinite spare time, because we all have so much of it. If you would like to check it out, you're more than welcome to. My part's like about an hour in. It's two hours long. If you just need background noise while you're folding laundry, you could take a look at it. So for seal recognition... Oh, and I forgot to mention. So that opportunity then opened the door for me to be invited to sit on the State Seal of Biliteracy Committee, which is like super cool. I get to be in a room with Kelly Alvarez, who is like the head EL person in the state and like so many other amazing people here in the State of Michigan to talk about the Seal of Biliteracy and promote it and establish all of our policies and stuff, which is incredible. So for the Seal of Biliteracy, students get a letter from... So if they qualify, they get a letter from the state superintendent. They get a certificate of proficiency that has their name on it and then has the language that they're proficient in. They also get like a literal foil seal that they can put on their diploma or on a transcript, wherever, their phone case, wherever they would like to show it off. And then here in Mylan, we also give them cords for graduation. And I present all of that at class night. And I present them with their cords and the certificate, and I talk a little bit, if they say it's okay. I talk a little bit about their journey and how they got here. And for some of our students, we had a student who had just taken Spanish all throughout high school and was really good at it and loved it, and he took the test for the Seal of Biliteracy and earned it. I mean, native English speaker, so that's also one of the ways that you can get the seal. And so we've really been within the committee trying to promote it, and we've been talking with colleges. And Grand Valley will offer 15 credits to students who have the Seal of Biliteracy. They can put that toward a minor in their language that they're proficient in as long as it's a language that Grand Valley teaches. But if it's a language that Grand Valley does not teach, they can still get those 15 credits, and it goes towards sort of their general education credits. CMU offers eight in a similar situation. We are working on other universities, because when we have approached other universities and they're like, oh, yeah, uh-huh. And we say, hey, Grand Valley's offering up 15 credits. They're like, wait, what? Well, wait a minute. Yeah, so it's a really nice, a really nice draw, and obviously it looks fantastic on a resume. You know, to be able to show that you can not only speak a language, but you have been proven proficient to speak, read, and write in that language, which is pretty phenomenal. The number of seals that we have awarded, six in Spanish, one in Portuguese, two in Wolof, and two in Romanian. And then that is a map that the State of Michigan provides that has all of the schools who have awarded the Seal of Biliteracy. You get a little mark on the map, and it's kind of hard to see from here, but Mylan, we're on there, right kind of in the middle. And then when you click on that, it'll show you the languages, which is really cool. So it's kind of fun to kind of poke around the state and see who has it and what they've been awarded in, and it's kind of neat. And then I put an asterisk by the six in Spanish because one of those seals of biliteracy went to one of our adult ed students. Yeah, which I thought was amazing. It was so cool to be able to talk to Connie about that and coordinate that and give the assessment. Well, she didn't need an assessment. To get her transcripts from Mexico and then to be able to award her the Seal of Biliteracy was super cool. So that was on top of her getting her diploma last year. And then these are all of the languages that are spoken in our district, and this is thank you in all of those languages, which I think is really kind of cool to see. And I also want to say thank you to you as the Board for creating this position. I have been in this district for a very long time. I did my student teaching here with Tom Fallstrom, if you know the name, in the fall of 1994. And I taught a Spanish class during that time, during that year, and then I was hired the following year by Bill Matley to be an English teacher. And so I taught English and had a little overflow of Spanish, and then I was all English, and then I was all Spanish. And it was 28 years in, and it was great, but as you know, the climate has changed and things have gotten a little rough. And this position has honestly been a breath of fresh air, and it has been the rejuvenation that I have needed in my career and in my own heart and person to be able to feel immediately effective and to feel like what I'm doing matters. And so I so very much appreciate you approving this position, and Ryan, I appreciate your faith in me and all of the support that you have given me. Like I said, it has been a baptism by fire, and I have never had more fun. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a couple of things.
Yeah, for sure.
What's... What is Wolof?
So Wolof is a language that is spoken in Senegal.
Okay.
Speaking? Spoken. In Senegal. I'm still a little nervous.
Mr. Fallstrom was actually one of my teachers, so I won't say when I graduated. The Seal of Biliteracy was cool, and especially for that adult ed, that was cool at the graduation. It was very special.
Good.
Yeah.
Oh, good. I'm glad.
And I do want to give a personal thank you because in another hat that I wore with the soccer club, Ms. Sailor, talking about reaching out and getting resources was part of... There was a student that was an EL student, and their family needed help navigating the registration process and such. And Ms. Sailor reached out, and we got everything taken care of, and she definitely knows how to find the resources within Mylan. So I personally greatly appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Others? Mr. Pharaoh?
Just thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, the information, and your enthusiasm.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Sailor, absolutely same. When I was a tiny baby teacher, I began my career in Georgia and was teaching in a school where we had about 75% of our students who were English language learners from predominantly like South American and, you know, other Latin American areas, but also Arabic and African nations and all sorts of places. And so, yeah, I did... It didn't transfer to Michigan, but I did do a certification in EL instruction in Georgia. And so, yeah, also very near and dear to my heart, and I just loved hearing you speak about, yeah, being able to pursue this new passion in your career and relate to that, you know, as well. So just, yeah, from one former EL educator to another, thank you so much for your service and thank you for the just absolute wealth of resources that you provide to our community as the one woman army that you are. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. It would be really nice if there were two of me, one to do like K6 and then the other one to do 712, but...
Are there others?
In an ideal world.
Mr. McMahon?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jen for all her work. It's been fun watching the position grow, watching you grow in the position. I don't... Is it the fourth year now?
Yep, fourth year.
So going back about six years, we knew it was best practice to get better at teaching all students, even those that have a language barrier, and we had to kind of figure out how to do that. And Jen, and we knew it was moving from best practice to a requirement, a state requirement. And Jen was willing to go back to school and get the certification. We were able to support her with some grant funds in that endeavor. But watching you grow in the position's been a lot of fun, and it's still developing, right? We're still learning how to access the youngsters. And I don't want to let Jen sell us off short when she says she's working on the Seal of Biliteracy Committee at the state level. She is literally with Kelly Alvarez, the Director of EL Services for MDE on a first-name basis. So when there's a question, and now she's a researcher for the county, so if anyone in the county has a question, they go to Jen. She goes directly to Kelly. She knows who we are. It's been just an asset to the district, so thanks for all that.
You're welcome.
So thank you for choosing Mylan. Thank you for continuing to choose Mylan. We sincerely appreciate it. So you are excused.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, next up, in the area of Finance and Operations, we have a Sinking Fund update. Mr. McMahon is going to give us an update in regards to the sinking fund as we have started to collect some of those funds and their uses and where we're at with the sinking fund. So I will turn it back over to Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Mr. Sislo. I believe Krista has handouts to pass down for you guys if you don't have them already, or do you have them? Yep, so we've been discussing sinking fund for a while. I mean, going back to even before the election, that we were so grateful for our taxpayers to help us obtain these funds. And so the election that provided us the sinking fund dollars is a little bit over a million dollars a year. This year, our allocation, we're projecting at $1.14 million. And so we've already started to expen- And so we've already started to expend some of those funds and we have some plans, I'm kind of sharing both with you. So I created a list of the items that we've either already purchased or are planning to purchase and then some of our ideas moving forward. So we did replace a boiler at the middle school that completely failed. We had to replace it. That's already in and it was just a little under $30,000. We did purchase a new bus and we've received that bus. It's getting retrofitted by our mechanics. There's a couple of things they have to do to get it officially road ready. So that's in our garage, getting set to get out on the road. And because we have received one, it means we can move one out of the fleet and take that to auction, so they're also doing that part. We did learn and we've been, so I'll share that anytime we consider something for sinking funds, there's a lawyer at Trune that specializes in sinking funds. So he gets a lot of emails from me and Krista saying, hey, is this eligible or this, or what about this part of the law? Is this, spend it? So what we looked was, we found, Krista found from a different law firm, some language that said you can purchase parts to maintain the vehicles. And so we reached out and he said certainly. So we haven't made any purchases there yet, but based on our previous year's budgets, we're expecting close to $90,000 in tires and brakes, mirrors, windshield wipers, you know, anything that we can use to maintain our vehicles. And we also learned it's not just vehicles purchased by sinking funds, it's all vehicles. So that was a nice little piece that we can save in our budget a little bit. We can also install bus cameras with that, which we haven't purchased any yet this year, but the new one needs a couple. And if any need to be replaced on existing buses, we can do that as well. So we don't have a line item for that yet, an amount. We do have a chiller at the middle school that needs to be replaced. It's been on its last leg for the last four years. My understanding is these chillers have four generators in them. And, you know, when one went down, they're like, okay, you're at 75% capacity, you can keep rolling, it'd be wise to fix it. Then when two went down, you're at 50%, well, we're now at 25% capacity and it's time to just replace it. And those are not affordable. It's roughly a quarter million dollars. We did receive a quote from Adrian Mechanical to give us a ballpark. We will be putting together an RFP for that because that's well above the state limit. We've been in contact with a few different companies to let them know that we're going to be presenting them with an RFP opportunity. It will be open through the state system for anybody to bid, but we're reaching out locally to say, you know, keep that on your radar because these take a while to get in. We have to do the RFP now. We don't need a chiller right now because the weather's changed, but we have to start the process now and get it ordered because it takes months for them to show up. And this is like the size of a school bus and it takes a crane to get it. It's a big deal. That's why it's, partly why it's so expensive. So that's going to go into this year's purchase. We are able to purchase student Chromebooks with sinking funds and we've done that for this year to the tune of $80,000. That will likely be a regular annual purchase with, along with the buses and the bus parts. We are eligible to purchase maintenance vehicles. This is new. This was not, buses did not used to be included in sinking funds and maintenance vehicles also did not. And so the language in our sinking funds allows us to purchase maintenance vehicles. And we unfortunately had an accident with one of our maintenance vehicles in late June and it was totaled. So we did receive insurance payout for that. That can be contributed towards this purchase. We historically have bought used vehicles here and we also use them to plow snow, so that's critical. So we've been shopping for a few months now for used vehicles and used trucks hold their value pretty well. They're pricey. And to get what we want and then to add a plow onto it, it was adding some costs and we were finding vehicles in the ballpark of the insurance money we had with 150,000-plus miles on them with a lot of rust and, you know, our mechanic would have to be doing a lot of work. Then we found out we can use sinking funds to purchase new vehicles and we found a vehicle consortium agency through the state that municipalities and schools can use and they're heavily discounted. So we actually have a quote that I'm going to bring to you, the next item here in the agenda, is to make our first purchase. It's through Gornford, I'll explain that, but that comes up to about $62,000. That includes plow and everything, all the amenities that we need to get it ready. It's road ready. We are able to purchase a dump truck. We are in dire need of a new dump truck. That's what we use to haul salt and to drop salt and then other playground equipment, whatever else big items we need to move. We do have one in the district. It is on its last leg. We've been putting a lot of money into maintaining it the last few years. Our new maintenance director, Gary, said they got it started, so that's promising and they can, they can use it until the wheels fall off, but it's time to replace it. And we can also purchase these through the consortium. So we're looking at getting a quote for that and we'll bring that to you as soon as we can get that organized. And parts and supplies can be used to maintain these. When we buy new vehicles though, we can, the warranty comes with them. So there's, I don't know what the powertrain warranties are on these vehicles, but it's your standard, you know, what, $36, I don't know, five years? But that comes in handy then. We have to, we can take that maintenance load off of our shoulders. We are able to add security cameras, which we have already done this year. Those went in late summer. Our most recent purchase was at Simons Middle School, just adding cameras to our current system for about $8,000. The next two items on the list are parking lots and roofing. These were two of the items that Mr. Gearbaugh presented in the sinking fund presentations that were kind of major items that are expensive and we need to address. So we are in the process of going down that road. I am scheduled to have a phone call with SETSEC Insurance Agency to get some direction on how we go about getting the scope of work defined. We believe SETSEC has somebody that can send to us to say, here's your list of priorities on your roofs. Then we can RFP that work out to companies and get that work taken care of. We know that we can't replace, I'm sorry, we can't repair our roofs. Like if there's a leak, you can't just use sinking funds to repair it, but you can replace sections of it. And we have, we have plenty of roofing areas that need to be replaced. We've been putting literally duct tape and Band-Aids on them for the last few years. So we'll be addressing those needs. Same with our parking lots. You can't patch and seal and paint with sinking funds, but you can replace portions of your parking lots. So we're going to get, hopefully SETSEC can help us, you know, identify. We can also see where there's major potholes and where sewers are collapsing to get that work done. But some of the remaining funds from this year will start going towards that and that will likely have to be out for a request for proposal. I listed truck parts there. That just speaks to the fact that we can, tires, oil, you know, any parts we need, plows, if we need to replace plows, we can purchase those for current maintenance vehicles. We had some ventilation work done at, in the high school storage areas attached to the gym. You may remember we had some water damage and being so close to the pool, humidity's high, so it can be like a mold. There's no ventilation. We don't want mold to happen. And so we actually cut out some, some of the brick, got some vents put in and some fans. That work's already been done. It was, it's run through our maintenance program. We're waiting to get the final. There was also some drywall work, other things included in that quote. So we had to parse it out to see what can be covered under sinking funds. I would expect it to be less than $10,000. We have a water main issue at the middle school that needs to be addressed. Gary is setting an appointment with our water department here in town. They understand what needs to be done. It's, our understanding at this point is our private side of the line, so we need to take care of it. But we, it needs to be addressed before it breaks because that would present a problem. So we're starting that conversation soon with the county. We don't know what can be covered under sinking funds with that, but I don't imagine it's going to be a cheap fix. There is a good chance that the water main that needs to be replaced is actually under the middle school. So there was some preliminary conversation about capping it and putting a new one in, likely out of the parking lot, I imagine. That's for the experts to figure out, but that will be, we'll be bidding that work out as well because it should definitely be over the threshold. And then we also replaced a domestic water heater at paddock and that was $11,260. We had to tie a water softener into that because the water in Mylan can be a little hard and they wear out pretty quickly for us. But the water softeners are explicitly listed in the legislation as not allowable. Don't know why, but they're not. So that had to come out of our budget. So that's our list. That puts us at, you know, about three quarters of it already accounted for this year or planned to be accounted for as long as we get some approvals. The remaining funds, the remaining $400,000 this year, we're going to put towards most likely parking lots and roofs. And then we allocate what we can towards the water main. We don't know when that work's going to happen, but those are our three big remaining projects this year.
Thank you for this list. Sincerely appreciate it. And I know you've been updating this, us on this work, but having it summarized here is helpful as we move forward with this and as we start to collect those funds. So other questions for Mr. McMahon or comments? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And that does bring us to the purchase of a maintenance vehicle, which you referenced.
Yep. So you have an attachment A, I believe it's, yes, attachment A is listed, is the vehicle we ordered or got a quote for to order. It's ready to go. It's on the lot. They do have to outfit it with the electrical wiring and the plow has to be added to it, but that's included, warranty's included. It's an F-250 four by four. The final price on it is $62,000, which is a pretty good price for what you're getting a brand new vehicle with warranty. The dealer actually brings it to us. That's part of the program. They're really easy to work with. I don't know if they get tax write-offs. I know the owner of this dealership, so I put a call in and said, so they're treating us great. I had heard it takes a long time, but they're like, no, we can get it to you in a few days. So if we get approval from the board, that's what we're asking for. Do you sinking funds to make this purchase? Snow's coming, so we need to get a plow ready. We have, we have two other trucks right now that can plow, but we do need a third. And like I said, we'll be coming to you with a dump truck to help with the salting, but this truck can be used for some salting in the meantime if our other one breaks down.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I should have started off. I need a motion to approve the purchase of a maintenance vehicle as presented in attachment A.
Moved by Farrell.
Support by Murray.
All right. Appreciate the background, for sure. Are there questions, concerns for Mr. McMahon in regards to this? All right. So it's been moved and supported to approve the purchase of the maintenance vehicle as presented in attachment A, Ms. Murray.
Thank you. Murray, yes? Pryor?
Yes.
Sislow?
Yes.
Burdette?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
And motion carries, five zero.
All right. That brings us back to communications and community engagement to our second set of public comments. Are there any students who'd like to address the board? Are there any public members who'd like to address the board?
Mike, I'm sorry, microphone, sorry. Name's Ron Stark, taxpayer, small business owner, Mylan. So when my daughter first brought this book home to me, it was extremely concerning. My daughter's 10. She was able to get her hands on graphic material in the library, which is under, you know, your, seconds, your Board Policy 2521. So, you know, these children need protected from this and it is your policy to protect them to age-appropriate content. I consider that a form of grooming when a child is exposed to content that is not suitable for them. And it's your job as board members to protect these children. Okay? I mean, it's, it's not cool. A lot of us are God-fearing people out here and the majority of Mylanites do not like this stuff in our school. 84% of Michiganders support. Uh, right here. Let's see, 2023, 2005 statewide survey showed 50% of Michiganders believe books should never be banned, but also highlighted strongly supported for age-appropriate placement with 84% endorsement that policy. You know, that should be a strong consideration for you when the majority of Michiganders and Mylanites do not want this stuff around our children. It should be, you know, when you're an adult, that's your own choices, your own decisions. But as a child, this is supporting mental illness. This is not natural. This is not part of nature. Animals don't even act like this. You know, I hate to be that graphic about it, but these are children. They need to be protected from this stuff. This is the parent's job. The parent's job is to inform the children on this type of ideology, not the school, not the school, not you guys, but the school, people at the school. It's not right. They're basically strangers to my child, allowing them to go up and get this graphic material off a public library where other children are not public, but, you know, the middle school library, it's just very unappropriate and it's terrifying. And I'll be back next, next month, try with more people. Hopefully we can get some action out of this because it is extremely concerning when young girls can go up and get this stuff when it's not even recommended for their age and you're in violation of your own policies. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. And yeah, so you're, and you're going to email the information?
Yep.
Okay. Yep, we would expect Superintendent McMahon to get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, we've got three violations here.
Are there any, any others? All right, our student board members are excused. Brings us to Assistant Superintendent comments, Ms. Bookout.
Thank you, Mr. Sislow. I'd like to begin with an update on student assessment. Mylan Middle School has been selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP. NAEP, unlike Mstep, which is a state assessment, NAEP is a federally mandated assessment that sort of provides a snapshot of achievement across the country. NAEP selects schools through a random sampling across the country to make sure that those assessment scores are representative of each of the 50 states as well as the federal, as well as the country as a whole. So in February, a sample of our eighth graders will be taking this assessment in math and reading. And we're working closely with the NAEP staff to make sure that all logistics and communications are in place for that and we'll keep our families informed as that date gets a little bit closer. I also want to let everyone know Mylan Middle School held its Veterans Day Assembly yesterday. That was a really lovely event. We had our fifth graders were able to sing. Our band played some songs for our community veterans. Some of our family members of students came in and some of our staff that are veterans also were able to come and be recognized by our students. We're able, and we're glad that students are able to have that opportunity to express their appreciation to the members of our community who've served in the armed forces. At paddock on Monday, our first graders completed a service project connected to their social studies unit on families and community. So our students worked together to make pumpkin pies for Aiden. Mylan are able to make some hand illustrated cards to go along with those pumpkin pies for people in the community to enjoy that with their Thanksgiving dinner. Promoting community service is one of our goals as a district. We don't have anything formalized in place yet, but some of our teachers are already taking that goal and running with it. And this is just a great example of how our teachers are taking that community service to heart, even with some of our youngest learners. And the students really appreciated that opportunity to give back to the community. At Simons, our fourth graders have two really special art experiences this week. Yesterday, they were able to attend a string quartet, who actually came to Simons and performed for them. And then tomorrow, they're getting to travel to Toledo to see the Toledo Symphony perform. So that really is an exciting opportunity for our students to get to have those experiences with the fine arts. I'm really grateful to GMACF for funding those programs for our students and especially to Mr. Adams for facilitating those trips. He's been instrumental in helping provide those for our students. I also want to highlight that paddock and Simons PTOs will be partnering to host a family movie night this Friday at the middle school. So we're hoping to see a lot of families there. And then finally, I've been able to attend the MTSS Conference in Lansing. I was there today and I'll be back tomorrow. So we're getting able, we're having more opportunities to really strengthen our implementation of MTSS. So I want to thank the district for providing those kinds of professional development opportunities. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for all the great information. We appreciate it. Superintendent comments, Mr. McMahon.
Mr. Sislow, I'm going to start my comments with a sad update. I'm on an announced community that unfortunately we lost a former employee, Kathy Casper. She passed away unexpectedly on Saturday. on Saturday. She worked for us for twenty-eight years and just retired this fall to spend more time with her family. And so it's, I mean, it's unfortunate, but the timing is also really unfortunate for her. So she's going to be deeply missed. She worked in our paddock kitchen. She managed the kitchen and kept our kids fed every day and she was always, always fun to be around and always good for a laugh. She was very helpful when I would come around. So we're going to miss her. Kathy's daughter Cassidy actually works for us at P E C C. So we're keeping her family in our thoughts and prayers. They have a service and a visitation scheduled for Saturday at Oshalak Stark. So that information was sent out to the staff. And I could share a link if anybody's interested here. Switching to more positive news. I, I do want to share that Mrs. Bookout and I and two board members got to attend the FCI commencement. That was last week already. Time is moving quickly. We had nineteen graduates joining the class of twenty twenty-five. It was, it was an honor to be there and to recognize them. Ellie Savitt, the county prosecutor, also gave a speech. It's a really nice event. I think the graduates appreciate the chance to see their family and be recognized. So, and it's always a fun event. I do want to share with the board and the community that I received notice that York Township is holding a special meeting next Tuesday, the eighteenth, at six thirty PM to discuss an application from the company Whitetail Solar. They're requesting a solar energy facility tax exemption. We don't necessarily announce community meetings, but I figured since it's connected to tax, that can be connected to schools. So I wanted to share that out there.
So the company is requesting a tax exemption from York Township?
Yep. And they're having a special meeting next Tuesday to discuss that matter. So.
All right. Thank you.
I would like to congratulate our girls swim team. They earned their twenty-six consecutive Heroic League championship, which is kind of unbelievable. We have a number of athletes that are qualified for the state meet that's coming up here. So we're wishing them luck and cheering them on. And also share that our girls volleyball team made it. They won last night and they made it to the regional final, which will be tomorrow night at Flat Rock against Flat Rock. I think the game's at seven PM. So we're rooting for our big reds there. And lastly, I want to thank our teachers and staff for the extra work they put towards parent teacher conferences two weeks ago. It's a lot of extra work. It makes those days long. And the schedules get jumbled. It's, you know, it's just a lot on their plate, but the connection with the parents is invaluable. So we really appreciate the extra work they put in to make that happen. So thanks to the teachers. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Board member comments. Mr. Burdette.
Alrighty. I just wanted to say that I was able to attend the volleyball match last week against Jefferson in which they finished things off very, very quickly. And I do look forward to seeing them in the regional final tomorrow night. Congratulations to all of them. I know they're working really hard and it's very, very exciting. I was also able to attend the high school football banquet last night. Which the, the football team and the boosters just do a really, really good job of recognizing the students, especially the seniors. The senior recognition was just very, very well done. So kudos to them. And the high school play, The Odd Couple, is coming up starting next week. Opening night is next Thursday, the twentieth. There are two different casts. One of the casts will be performing on Thursday night at seven and then Saturday afternoon at two o'clock. And then the other cast will be performing Friday night and Saturday night at seven PM. And I look forward to seeing as many of those shows as possible. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Others? Mr. Pharaoh.
Just very briefly, I, I want to extend my thanks to Carrie Mink and to the, my board colleagues for attending the FCI graduation on November fifth. I apologize that I was not able to be there. And I'm glad to hear that, that the event and the celebration went well. I also want to sincerely thank the voters within the WISD for voting to approve the recent CTE millage. I'm just very thankful and I'm very glad that, that it passed and, and those use sources will be used in in a lot of different ways. And I think it's just going to be great for our student populations. So thank you to our voters for approving the WISD CTE millage. And then finally, winter sports are here at the high school. They've started. So if you're interested in boys' basketball, girls' basketball, boys' and girls' bowling, boys' ice hockey, co-ed powerlifting, boys' swimming, boys' and girls' wrestling, reach out to the coaches or reach out to our athletic director, Herb Borlock.
Thank you, Mr. Pharaoh. Others?
Good evening. I too would like to take a moment to thank voters across Washtenaw County for their passage of the CTE millage. It is historic funding. I was actually just trying to pull it up because they shared it with us at work and I don't have the exact numbers. But we've, the county has attempted to pass this millage multiple times over the last two or three decades. And this is the first time that we've been successful in securing a, a long-term stable source of funding for this type of education in our county. So I am deeply, deeply grateful and I'm so excited for how this will impact our learners here in Mylan and indeed across the county. And so a specific thank you to Ryan Rowe and the whole CTE team at the WISD for their extremely effective efforts in educating our public about the need for this in order to address our CTE desert. I also would like to congratulate the FCI graduates and to thank my fellow board members and administration for attending. I had it on my calendar and then unfortunately it was needed at work in a way that I couldn't wriggle out of. So I was deeply sad to yet again miss it. But I'm just continually so proud to have that be an offering that our school provides to our community and to those graduates. Very much looking forward to The Odd Couple. I want to wish the both casts and the directors and the whole team at MHS Productions an awesome run. And, and then lastly, congratulations to our volleyball team. I was only able to watch it remotely. But, and then the feed cut out, which was extremely frustrating. So thank you to Ms. Pryor for sending text updates because in our household, we were just on the edge of our seats and, excuse me, the feed went out on us. But it's just been such a joy to watch those players evolve over their time as volleyball players. Some of them began with our middle school volleyball program and are still playing at this high level and achieving great things. So I look forward to Thursday's outcome. And with that, I will pass. Thank you.
Um, I just have a few things, a couple of business things. Just a reminder that our Big Red Board Chat, we, we are not, there will not be one this Thursday. We're in the process of reorganizing that again to, to help with involvement, participation. So like I said before, I reached out to the library to, to get a different venue. And so look forward for those future Big Red Board Chats in the future. I am going to start the board self-evaluation with the MASB, the Michigan Association of School Boards. Cassie went to a training on it and they did, they made a recommendation that we do it at least every other year in the odd year before an election because that's when we, you've got the most experience on the board, as demonstrated by Mr. Burdette. You know, if we would have had that evaluation last year, they may not have known. It was the same with Mrs. Pryor. She just got on the board. So it's kind of like we're having you evaluate things and you don't, you don't even know. So I think we're going to start doing that on the, the odd years. And I'll go ahead and get that started. So you'll have like two to three weeks to complete that. And so, and then we'll get the results and we can look at that in the new year. So. Also, yeah, huge thanks for the CTE millage. I know Mr. McMahon is working with his colleagues in the hopes of enhancing those programs at Mylan, specifically our agricultural program and our, our building program as well. So look forward to hearing those updates on how they're going to support the, the students of Mylan. Yeah. Big congrats to the volleyball. Ms. Pryor and I attended last night. It was very fun. They are a very, very talented group of young women, young women. So look forward to Thursday when they can bring a, a region, regional trophy home. So. And then I do want to, the prison graduation was, it was, it was moving as always. And it's kind of, kind of cool that that was your first official graduation as Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent in Mylan. It's kind of, you know, nobody, nobody else can say that in the, in the nation that your first graduation was in a, for high schoolers in a prison, a federal prison. So that's, that's, you can add that to your resume. I did, the, the graduates, they, they all write a, a little story or a thank you. And I just wanted to read one because I thought it's, it's just very to the point. So this gentleman wrote, I never thought I would make it to graduation. I will be honest. If it weren't for prison, I probably would have not, would not have obtained my high school diploma. I want to thank the teachers, Ms. Mink, Ms. Smith, Ms. Kay and Mr. McCown for their motivation. If I can do it, so can you. So I think, you know, there's a lot of sentiments in here, a lot of thanks to their families, the teachers, the program, the Mylan community. It will not be lost on these gentlemen that they were in the Mylan community. I overheard one of them talking to Ellie, the Washtenaw County prosecutor, how he was going back home to a different state and he was going to be starting a nonprofit. So it's just very powerful and, you know, the lessons that these gentlemen have learned through their trials and tribulations and to hear that, you know, they're, they're wanting to make the community better based on what they've learned in the prison. It's, it's a, it's a powerful program. So. With that, are there any other comments? All right. I need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to section eight one C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for negotiation strategies.
Moved by Burdette.
Support by Pryor.
It's been moved and supported to enter into closed session pursuant to section eight one C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for negotiation strategies. There will be no other business before the board when we return except for adjournment. Any other questions or comments? All right. It's been moved and supported to enter into closed session pursuant to section eight one C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for negotiation strategies. Ms. Marie.
Thank you. Marie, yes. Pryor?
Yes.
Sislo?
Yes.
Burdette?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
And motion carries five zero.
All right. We are going into closed session at eight PM. Drive home safely. We are returning to open session at eleven thirteen PM and adjourning at eleven thirteen PM.